Prayer is Nanette and then I have Emma Bergeron.
They can come up now.
Perfect. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I have Councilwoman Cook lead us in prayer and I have a special guest this evening, Emma Bergeron, with our Lady of Fatima will be coming up to lead us in pledge. Councilwoman?
We pray tonight for strength during these challenging times. We pray for your love and compassion to abound as we walk through this challenging season. We ask for wisdom for those who bear the load of making decisions with widespread consequences. We pray for those who are suffering with sickness and all who are caring for them. We ask for protection for the elderly and vulnerable to not succumb to the risk of the virus. We pray for your misfortune to be curbed, that we may take no holds in hearts and minds. As we exercise the good sense that you and your mercy provide, may we also approach each day in faith and peace, trusting in the truth of your goodness towards us. Amen.
Amen. All right, Ms. Emma, whenever you're ready.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Start.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job.
Well, that was way cuter and better than any job we could have done. So, thank you so much, Ms. Emma. I appreciate it. We welcome you to the Lafayette City Council meeting. As presiding officer and chair, I'd like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the speaker form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistance is available if needed. Items for submission of the council should be handed to Council Clerk Ms. Veronica L. Williams, seated to my left in the middle. When addressing the council, state your name, a title for the official record. The three-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements shall be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolution and not Robert's Rules of Order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement on boards and commissions. If interested, please call 291-8800. I would like to wish a happy birthday to Jeremy Sweeney, Council Senior Administrative Assistant, which he will celebrate February 4th. I'd like to wish happy birthday to Cindy A. Bear, Council Administrative Assistant, which she will celebrate February 6th. And I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Councilman Pat Lewis, District 1 City Council member, who he will celebrate February 6th. Due to the Montegra holiday, the city council meetings for February and March have been scheduled on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, rather than the first and third Tuesdays. Meetings will return to their typical schedule in April. I don't, I'm sorry, we have two changes to the intro amendments. Intro ordinances, number 19, curfew downtown, and number 29, alcohol beverages will be pulled from global listings for discussion. Council announcements, I don't see any council announcements, other than my birthday was missed on here, Ms. Veronica, February 9th. It's the next meeting, it's my birthday.
Birthday.
So, I love yellow cake and chocolate icing, or cookie cakes, if anyone is interested. Oh, Pat, you have something? Oh, sorry. Give me one second. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want the people that's here and the ones that's looking on TV, that if you pass by the full corner area, there's a lot of movement going on around there. HRI, the developers, and they're finishing, they never finished the first phase, but they're starting to work on the second phase. And that phase is where the less paid motel were demolished. Now they're getting ready to start that. They're doing a lot of groundwork right now. The buildings should start coming up. You should see some steel, some iron, something coming up, probably within about the next month. So, I'd like to, everyone, if you're passing by, just to look at how wonderful it's looking. That's going to be a full-story, full-story apartment complex, right there where the less paid motel was. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again on that, Mr. Lewis. I know that's a big win for your district and for the community. Councilman Lazard, I'm trying to give you the, okay, yes, sir, you have the floor when you're ready.
Yes, I would just like to, if I may, I would like to call up Bishop Carlos Harvin, Chief of Minority Affairs, make some observations in recognition of Martin Luther King.
Give me one second. That mic is live. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carlos Harvin, Chief of Minority Affairs, in the office of Mayor President Josh Guillory for LCG. Speaking with Councilmember Glenn Lazard, we, of course, echo the birthday greetings that we've given to everyone who have a birthday in January. And we cannot help but note that a great American, a drum major, a leader and a visionary, celebrated his birthday on the 15th of January. We marked it officially on yesterday. And so, we want to recognize the birth of Martin Luther King Jr., who, his life and words are so appropriate in this time, when we are going through so much conflict, turmoil, we're seeing division in our nation. And what he preached on during his time is so appropriate here in the 21st century, that we would either live together as sisters and brothers, or we would perish as fools. And it is in that spirit that Dr. King shared his dream with us, that his four little children would live in a nation where they would not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. And so, I feel and I agree with Councilmember Glenn Lazard, that it is fitting for us to mark this day, this occasion, when we have gathered here together as one family, different colors, different political stripes, different backgrounds, but to acknowledge, as Dr. King acknowledged, that we are one nation under God. And so, let us continue to devote ourselves to the vision that he not only lived for, but a vision that he gave his life for. He was very mindful that his call would cost him the ultimate price, that he would lose his life. Aware that he might not get to the promised land with us, he said he looked over and saw the promised land, and said that one day, we as a people, would get to the promised land. Let us pray for God's grace. Martin King is praying for us now, that we would make it as one people. Thank you very much.
Is that all you had, Councilman Lazard?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Knockan, you have the floor.
Well spoken, Mr. Harvin. Thank you very much. I just wanted to shout out a kudos to Republic Services and the Lafayette Recycling Program. I found this on the street, unfortunately, not in the recycling bin. But they're going around inspecting these bins individually for proper disposal of the recycling products. If you get one of these, please read it. It's very important and easy to follow. This program we have is a wonderful program. It's a program that benefits everybody, the whole, not just the individual. So, please read these notices if you get them, and please try to adhere to them, because it's so important to make this program work. We really have a good thing going here in Lafayette. We're jewel. Let's honor that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knockan. I don't see any other council announcements. Mayor, do you have anything on your report?
Yes, Madam Chair. First, I would like to be the first to officially say happy birthday early to our chairperson. So, thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
We're going to beat the next council meeting. So, happy birthday, and also happy birthday to all our council staff. We appreciate all that you do, especially that coffee you put out in the back for those late meetings. Now, before, I have a few thoughts on downtown I'd like to share with the council, but I want to first echo every word that our Chief of Minority Affairs just said. And, you know, we do celebrate a great American, yes, well, we did celebrate a great American yesterday, and the words of "peace and love your neighbor" is never more relevant than now. You know, so as Americans, you know, no matter what, where you sit at on the ideology, we're Americans, and we agree far more than we disagree. And we most certainly can pray for our leaders, even if you didn't vote for them, they're there. So, we can either choose to help make them better, even in disagreement, or we can choose to not do that. And I hope that we all choose to make all of us better. So, thank you for your kind words, Carlos. I appreciate you, and I appreciate your service. We did have a lot of discussion, Madam Chair, and council members, and to the public regarding downtown. I'll just share my thoughts. But first, I want to thank everyone for their input. I see a lot of stakeholders here from downtown, so I thank you. I know, I certainly appreciate all of the feedback that you gave me. I know Councilman Lazard, as the Councilman for downtown, certainly appreciates you as well. But I will say, as the mayor of the city of Lafayette, I am committed to making downtown safer and more prosperous. Now, I have been relayed to several concerns that I think, I know Councilman Lazard probably has heard a lot of these, and I just want to kind of address these. So, first is underage teenage drinking downtown. Now, I think we can all agree that this is both a public safety, but also a public health risk and concern, and it definitely does not make downtown safer or more prosperous. Another concern that I'm being relayed is people tailgating. That is, folks driving into downtown and drinking alcohol, basically drinking in their cars and not in our bars. This does not lead to a safer and more prosperous downtown. Another issue that I'm being relayed to, and this is just feedback, is open container. Now, my appreciation of open containers is it leads to crowds gathering. It also leads to drinking in the streets from oftentimes people that are already intoxicated. Sadly, it also related to violence, as we saw over the last year, gun violence specifically. None of this makes our downtown safer or more prosperous. I've also been asked to find ways, good afternoon, I've also been asked to find ways to reserve the convenience of short-term street parking to customers of downtown, and encourage those who park for more than an hour to use our parking garage. I would agree that this leads to a safer, more prosperous downtown. Now, in order to address these requests and concerns from our downtown stakeholders, I have proposed a multi-pronged approach that includes parking, loitering, and of course, public safety. Now, we put out the notice in regards to implementation of new rates and also enforcement regarding parking meters, and we have received a lot of helpful feedback. Again, I want to say that I'm thankful for your feedback, and again, not to speak for our good Councilman, but I'm sure Councilman Lazard appreciates the feedback as well. But I strongly believe that all of us here on the council, in the administration, our public, we're all committed to a safer and more prosperous downtown. Now, as a result, I'm willing to wait until we have achieved consensus on the other prongs of our approach, before implementing the parking element of the plan. So, as far as the administration goes, we will wait to make any changes as regards to parking rates, or parking meters, or enforcement. And the two ordinances that were pulled out of introductory, my recommendation is for the council to give some thought. If you feel like it's more appropriate to defer those two items, I have no objection. We can continue to engage with our stakeholders, continue to engage with the public, and I think we get a better product that way. So, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, and I also want to say that I'm very sorry that I missed that beautiful young lady in her pledge of allegiance. I was in the back, and the prayer, so sorry about that. And good job.
Yes, she did a great job. Thank you. Resolutions. This is a public hearing. Speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you please read?
City Resolution 1, 2021. A resolution of the Lafayette City Council canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election held in the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, on Saturday, December 5th, 2020, to authorize the rededication of sales and use taxes therein.
Can I get a motion in a second? I have a motion by Knockan and a second by Cook. Council discussion, not seeing any. Ms. Williams, do we have any public comment on this issue?
No, ma'am.
No, sir. Please call for a vote from the council to adopt the resolution.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 2, 2021. A resolution of the Lafayette City Council, creating the Protect the City Committee, to advise the Lafayette City Council on whether consolidation is beneficial to the city of Lafayette.
Can I get a motion in a second? I have a motion by Cook, a second by Lazard. Council discussion, not seeing any. Ms. Williams, do we have any public comment?
Um, we do have speakers.
Okay, great.
The first of which is William Linecker, followed by William Tealy.
Perfect. And for everyone looking to speak, both podiums are available, so just pick the one you want to speak at, and then they are being cleaned individually as we go. So, thank you.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Bill Linecker, and I just want to tell you that I wholeheartedly support the formation of a commission and any and all efforts to examine the effects of consolidated government on the city of Lafayette, and how deconsolidation, on any level, can be beneficial to the city of Lafayette. My first thought upon hearing of Mr. Lewis's thought of forming the committee was, what a fantastic idea. I can't think of anyone who would object to looking at all of the options and coming up with a plan. But then I thought, well, you know, maybe that's just me. So, over the extended weekend, I probably had the opportunity to speak with about 100 people about Mr. Lewis's idea, and here are some of their comments. One person cannot successfully and adequately fulfill the duties of the parish president and the mayor of Lafayette. Totally different skill sets. A separate and distinct parish president is needed to focus on the unique needs of the parish, and a separate and distinct mayor is needed to focus on the unique needs of the city of Lafayette. At present, the city of Lafayette has no mayor, no advocate for the city of Lafayette, something other municipalities have. The present form of government may have been plausible 25 years ago, but it is not now. The parish and the city will never reach their full potential under the present structure. Lafayette Parish will never be united until each municipality has its own separate and distinct mayor. It's impossible. Here's an important one. What is beneficial to the city of Lafayette is not mutually exclusive of what is beneficial to the parish. Both can benefit. Finish the job. The city of Lafayette has its own council, now it needs its own mayor, just like the other municipalities. The present configuration has already been shown to be a source of major conflict. Again, I support forming the commission and the open discussion on the findings of the commission. I support the city of Lafayette in regaining its autonomy, the same autonomy that every other municipality in the parish enjoys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see Councilman Lewis, you have the floor. You'll wait, okay?
Yeah, because we do have four more speakers.
Four more speakers? Okay, sure.
Yes, ma'am. William Tealy is up next, followed by Jared E. Banks.
Sure. And Will, you can use that one while we're cleaning this one. Thank you.
Hello. My name is William Tealy. I live in City District 2. Councilman Andy Knockan represents me, so thank you to him. And I would like to say congratulations to Councilwomen A. Bear and Cook for becoming the city of Lafayette's first-ever chairwoman and vice-chairwoman duo. I wanted to voice my support in favor of forming, in favor of forming the Protect the City Committee. I was very much in favor of Fix the Charter back in 2018. In fact, the very first ever council meeting that I ever went to was the council meeting where the city parish council voted in favor of the charter amendments. Essentially, Fix the Charter is how I got my start in being civically engaged. I've spoken at numerous council meetings in support of those charter amendments, and I get it, Lafayette has this weird semi-consolidated form of government, where the city of Lafayette consolidated into the parish, but the other cities of Youngsville, Broussard, Scott, Carrin Crow, they all did not. In my opinion, Fix the Charter was a brilliant attempt to get this weird form of semi-consolidated government to work. But in order for Fix the Charter, Home Rule Charter to work, it needs good actors executing on that vision. Sadly, I don't think that's what we saw last year in 2020. Council meeting after council meeting showed us more and more examples of the mayor president fighting with the city council, of the city parish attorney fighting with the city council, of the parish council fighting with the city council. And now, if we could get the city council, the parish council, the mayor president, the city parish attorney, all in one room, and have this big kumbaya, coming-together moment, then maybe we would be fine. Maybe the Fix the Charter, Home Rule Charter would work. But sadly, I don't think we're going to be able to accomplish that. Therefore, the city council has no other choice but to defend itself and the city tax dollars of its citizens. In short, the city needs to implement this committee. And look, if this committee's ultimate decision is that deconsolidation is the best path forward, then that's okay. Deconsolidation is not some bad word. 99% of America operates on separate city council, oh, city, county, and state governments. We wouldn't be doing anything weird by deconsolidating. We would be joining the rest of America. Please vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Jared E. Banks, followed by Keith Falk.
My name is Jared E. Banks. I'm a resident of City District 2. I come here tonight in support of this resolution and this committee. I think the most obvious reason is that no one who followed this past year's budget process walked away with the idea that this is how we want our government to function. There was fraught debate, as we were saying, councils stymying one another. There was fallout even afterwards over legal representation. I think all of this together revealed to us that we still have major issues with the structure of our government and our elected representatives working together. I think this is a great idea, though, not just for the city. I think it can help with some of these issues, and I think it can also help our parish. Our parish council, just earlier tonight, had to allocate funds from one dedicated project to cover general maintenance. I think we all know that's not an isolated endeavor for them. Rethinking how we share and allocate costs for these joint functions should not just help the city have more control over its future trajectory. It should grant the parish the autonomy they need to invest in the services they need, while cutting back on those that they simply cannot afford right now. I also don't see this as a failure of our recent charter amendments. I think this is a revelation fostered by these changes. Baseless, like arcane allocation formulas and foggy shared expenses, is not something that just happened this year. It's something that we finally have more light on. I'm glad the independent councils have made these issues more transparent and kind of pulled out of the dark what's been happening. This committee is taxed with some serious questions that we probably should have been asking for the past several years, and even once we resolve them, should probably continue to ask ourselves in the years to come. Tax dollars are hard to levy, which I assume comes as no surprise to y'all. And those tax dollars are also trusted to representatives. We expect to spend them wisely. Of course, we should want to know what the return on these investments are. We reshaped our government drastically in the '90s, a move that came with some costs and loss of representation, but with the promise of savings. It's high time to know, what were these savings? Probably apparent to many of you is where I stand on this. I've been here before, once or twice, talking about this. But regardless of our different hopes, desires, and what we really want as an ultimate outcome of this, I think we can all agree that the answers to these questions are necessary to effectively guide Lafayette City and parish to its future. So, please vote yes. Thank you, guys.
Next speaker, Keith Falk, followed by the final speaker, Wallace Senegal.
My name is Keith Falk. I'm a concerned community activist, and I would like to express my support in this resolution for Protect the City Committee, and I urge each and every council member to support this resolution. We shouldn't ask what consolidation, what consolidation has done for the city of Lafayette. We should ask what the city of Lafayette has done for consolidation. And in closing, I want to thank the mayor president and show our appreciation for allowing the city of Lafayette to have its first African-American chief of police.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Wallace Senegal.
I want to congratulate you guys and welcome you guys back for 2021. Mayor President, I agree with what Keith Falk said, you know, I want to congratulate you on the wonderful job that you did. And I'm standing with my council, Councilman Farmer-Chairperson Pat Lewis, in agreement with our resolution that he's trying to pass. We do need our own mayor. Where did Fix the Charter bring us? Some chaos, some not-so-chaos, but fixing the charter is not for the city of Lafayette. And that was a move, I think it was the way they worded, and while we was voting for Fix the Charter, all we did, far as I'm concerned, we broke the charter. Thank you, guys. Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, just as an FYI to the listening audience, the two vacancies for the Protect the City Committee is being announced tonight. There will be two vacancies, or two appointments, that will be done by the council as a whole. So, we're announcing tonight that we will be taking applications, and those applications are due to the council office by February 9th.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, any, no other speakers, correct?
Correct.
All right, Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am hereby forming this Protect the City Committee. A lot of the speaker, I want to wait and speak after I hear the speakers speak, and just about everything, well, not it, just about everything people are saying that I agree with, I concur with it. But the way it's going to be formed is that we're going to have seven members on this committee. Each council member from District 1, which is myself, District 2, District 3, District 4, and District 5 will appoint one person. One person will be appointed by each council member, and the other two, which will make seven, like Ms. Chair, Ms. Veronica, I'm sorry, Chair, Ms. Clerk Veronica Williams said, to be in a whole, meaning that next week, when we have our council meeting, we're going to, I think that's when you guys are going to put in applications pretty soon.
That's the deadline.
If this passes.
February 9th, and appointments will be made February 23rd.
Right, right. And all seven members shall be registered voters, the city of Lafayette residents. The committee shall meet as often as is necessary, but at a minimum, shall meet at least the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. The term of the committee members shall expire with either the following of the committee's final report with the city of Lafayette. In other words, they will come to the city of Lafayette, to the council and the administration, and make their final report. At the committee's first meeting, they shall elect from its members a chair and a vice-chair. At the conclusion of this work, the committee shall provide a final report that addresses at a minimum the following questions. How has the city of Lafayette shared the cost of government service changed over time compared to the parish? compared to the parish? Are city tax dollars being spent outside of the city limits of Lafayette? Is consolidation fair to the city of Lafayette taxpayers? Does consolidation result in a form of government that best represent the interests of the city of Lafayette residents? What are the potential annual savings to the city of Lafayette after this consolidation? Would the city of Lafayette be better served by having its own elected mayor? And there shall be some other amendments. There were just a few questions I would propose to the committee. But then, as I were thinking and putting things together, what I really believe, and I think a lot of people, one of the gentlemen did mention that, we have five municipalities. Carron Crowe, Scott, Doucet, Broussard, and Youngsville. Five municipalities. Just think about this. For instance, Carron Crowe has a population of almost 9,000 people and a budget of a little over $50,000, well, almost $16 million. They have their own mayor, their own council, even they can elect their own police of chief. Whereas Lafayette has a population of 126,000 people with a budget of about $104 million. And we need, they support, I mean, not they support, but they vote for our mayor, president, vote for the council. We cannot vote for their mayor. When they have an election, you can't vote for the mayor of Carron Crowe. You cannot vote for their council members. Cannot elect their chief of police. We do not have a chief of police. Our chief of police is appointed, like the two gentlemen say. Thanks to Mr. Mayor President, we have an African-American chief of police. That was appointed. Ours is not appointed. It's elected. So maybe it might be something that the committee might look into, having the chief of, elected chief of police. Scott, almost 9,000 people as well, with a budget of $11 million, almost, yeah, $11,380,000. Doucet, check this out, less than 2,000 people with a budget of $2,600,000. And they have their own mayor, council members, elected chief of police. Again, Lafayette cannot vote for their mayor, council, can I? So is that fair? Council member, that's why I'm asking you guys to support this resolution, so this Protect the City Committee can start working out, working things out, and see how we can make it better for the citizens of Lafayette. Because remember, when we were talking about, I think Mr. Williams talked about, he was one of them that was supporting Fix the Charter. Remember that, sir? I don't know if you're still here. You were talking about it. And I was opposed for some of those reasons. So now we have a time, a chance to probably, most likely, make it right for the citizens of Lafayette, the taxpayers of Lafayette. That's what it's about, the taxpayers, not about Pat Lewis. It's about the taxpayers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mayor President, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to kind of address my two friends here on the front row, my neighbors, Mr. Falk and also Mr. Senegal. You know, I just want to highlight one, one little clarification. We, as a committee, and Councilwoman Abir served on it, Councilman Rubin served on it, we selected the best candidate. Now, he happens to be African-American, but we selected the best candidate, and I'm very proud to serve with this gentleman in the back, so I know he's going to do well for Lafayette. But I do appreciate your kind words, and I didn't want you to leave without me telling you that. So thank you. Thank you.
That's all?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, you can close off your dismissal. Thank you. All right, that was public discussion. Now we're going to go to a vote for the council to adopt the resolution.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One? Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint resolutions. This is a public hearing. Speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, please read.
Joint Resolution Two, 2021. A joint resolution of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending Joint Resolution Thirty-seven, 2020, which establishes the rules and order of business for the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council.
I have a motion by Knockan, second by Cook, council discussion. I believe the only thing that I saw in here that was changed was moving the time at the city council meetings, moving forward from 6:00 PM to 5:30 PM, just because the parish council's done such a great job at being so efficient. So we were going to move up our meetings a little earlier, and that is the only change, as far as I'm understanding.
Correct. And we did move the, should there be a special joint meeting, we moved that to 5:15 in the middle of the two meetings.
Perfect. Well, great. Well, that is all I have. I'm not seeing any council discussion. Do we have any public comment, Ms. Veronica?
No, no public comment.
All right, thank you. Let's go to a vote for the council to adopt the resolution.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Resolution Three, 2021. A joint resolution of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing a non-warranty cash sale of 405 Verden Street to an adjoining landowner pursuant to Louisiana revised statute 47-2202B for the price of the sale's anticipated costs.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lazard. Any public council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Joint Resolution Four, 2021. A joint resolution of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing a non-warranty cash sale of 309 Madeleine Avenue to an adjoining landowner pursuant to Louisiana revised statute 47-2202B for the price of the sale's anticipated costs.
I have a motion by Ms. Cook. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Knockan. Any council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Mr. Knockan?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Ordinance's final adoption. This is a public hearing, and speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, please read.
City Ordinance One Oh Eight, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council approving a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through restaurant in a mixed-use neighborhood zoning district, case number ZON 2020-22, 604 East Willow Street, conditional use permit located generally north of East Willow Street, west of Louisiana Avenue, and east of Pecan Archer Road.
Do I have a motion and a second? A motion by Ms. Cook. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Knockan. Council discussion, I'm seeing. Mr. Lazard, you have, the floor is yours.
Yes. This is the ordinance that was offered for final adoption at the last meeting that I respectfully requested be pulled and deferred until I got some more information on exactly what the nature of the business was and to get some clarification from planning and zoning. And I'm satisfied at this point that it's appropriate to move forward with it. It's given some reassurances by the developer. Spoke directly with the developer in terms of the nature of the project, planning and zoning, in terms of the impact that it might have on the adjacent neighborhood. And I'm confident that it's going to have a minimal impact. There's also the additional protections, if you will, because this is part of the Louisiana Avenue overlay district. So there are some specific standards in terms of building construction and what have you. So I'm saying all this to reassure the residents of the neighborhood, and I just happen to be one of those, this is two blocks away from where I live, that I'm comfortable with it and have no objections to it at this point in time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Lazard. Do I have any other council comments? I'm not seeing any. Ms. Williams, do we have any public discussion?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote, please.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance One, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $39,100 received from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Do I have a motion and a second? A motion by Mr. Lazard, a second by Mr. Knockan. Any council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance Two, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $800,000 from prior year fund balance to the Ambassador Caffrey Soundwall Replacement/Repairs Project within the Public Works Department Capital Improvements Division for additional funding needed.
Can I get a motion and a second? I have a motion by Knockan, second by Cook. Council discussion, Mr. Knockan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are three people I'd like to recognize tonight in bringing this forward. The first is our chairwoman, Liz Abir. The second is our mayor president, Josh Gilbry, and the third is Ms. Lori Toops. They worked hard in finding this money to do such a worthwhile project, will definitely clean up an area Lafayette is in dire need of it. Anyone that drives around on that wall, it's an eyesore, and it's a nuisance for the neighbors living there. It's not the way I want my city to look. So I want to thank everybody involved, Public Works. Y'all doing a great job. Let's move forward with this, and let's get this done the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knockan. I want to echo your remarks. As Councilman Knockan and I actually split this district where the wall is currently located, there's one road that splits us up. I just inherited this territory with the rezonings, and whenever I knocked on doors during the campaign, every single resident said that wall needs to be replaced. It's not only an eyesore, but a safety hazard. So I'm thrilled that we could all work together. So thank you again to everyone that Councilman Knockan mentioned, and that's all I have. I'm asking my fellow council members for their support on this. Thank you. Do we, I don't see any other council member remarks. Do I have any public comments?
We did have 32 citizens who either called in or emailed in to state their support for the ordinance. We do have one speaker, Breon Hendricks.
Perfect. Well, come on, each, either one is available to you.
And I'm sorry, I don't know if it's Breon or Breonnie.
Briann, but.
Briann, okay.
Listen, I've had so many people have the invisible A at the end of my name. It's, yeah. So greetings, council members, and thank you for your service to our city. I'm Breon Hendricks with Parish Proud, and I came today to speak on support for this initiative. And Parish Proud, we strive towards our three Es, which is eliminating litter, enhancing beautification, and encouraging all around Parish pride. At Parish Proud, efforts such as these not only instill pride, but attract new businesses and new residents to our city. We know what beautification does to an area, and we know what, just taking, like, looking like a place is taken care of does. At times, it can affect property values, sometimes up to a 6% difference in property values in the area. Ambassador Caffrey, University Avenue and I-49 are entryways into our city. They're the living room into our collective home, and making sure our living room is picked up is incredibly important. Again, I wanted to thank you for your time and your support on this issue. We will also be hosting a pickup event this weekend to pick up Lafayette, right here along University Avenue. That will be from 9 to noon Saturday, and I encourage you all to come out and see what we can do when we all work together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all you do with that organization. It's an incredible organization. Councilman Knockan, you have the floor.
It was a very important person in the department I left out of this is Public Works and Chad Neview and all the work they put into this. They actually had a contract to go out there and do a mock-up to see how feasible this was, to assess the estimate, to try to get to the dollars we need, and they were very efficient in doing what they did. So Chad, thank you to you and the department, everybody involved over there. I appreciate all the work y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's all for our public comments?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote by the council.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance Three, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and adjusting the manning tables of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the budgeted pay rate of a labor foreman, too, within the operations and maintenance division of the Parks and Recreation Department.
I have a motion by Lewis. Do I have a second? Second by Cook. Council discussion, not seeing any, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance Four, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to transfer funds from the balance of $750,000 that was added during the budget process to restore positions previously eliminated and allocating additional funding where needed.
Do I have a motion and a second? I have a motion by Lazard, a second by Lewis. Council discussion, I'm seeing. Mr. Lazard, you have the floor.
Oh, yes, Sidra.
Hold on, let me make her mic hot. Give me one second. Sidra, your mic is hot.
Yes, sir.
Could you tell me where we are in terms of, in terms of the rehires? And if you have a count as to how many people we're able to bring back with the allocation?
Yes, and my stipulation will be that I can't tell you the status, but we have nine that we were able to add back into the budget. And I think, with the exception maybe of a maintenance person or two, that those positions have all been filled. And as promised, we went back to those employees that were eligible for rehire first, to offer them these positions first.
So we were only able to bring back nine?
We, of the 750,000, we committed half of that to the personnel, and yes, sir, that's what it amounts to when you calculate, calculate and the benefits and everything that comes along with, with personnel, yes.
You said we, we've spent half or we've committed half?
Half was committed to personnel, and the other half was committed to operations and maintenance. That was what was discussed during the budget process.
Hold on one second. Yes, sir.
Thank you. As the mayor of Lafayette, I am committed to protecting the finances of our great city, and part of that duty is to make sure that we're not spending more money than we need or that is appropriate to fulfill the mission at place. So at this time, we did hire back, as our CAO said, first going to our previously unfortunately let-go employees, our employees that were let go. So we brought those guys back, or at least offered the opportunity. And at right, at this moment, we still have some money that is allocated, but we're going to appropriate that to O and M, which was approved by the councils. And if we do need more employees, I will definitely come back to the city council, but I think all of you would share in the enthusiasm to not spend more money that's needed. Thankful to our parish council for finding ways to alleviate the burden on the city as far as spending money that's dedicated maybe outside of the city. So I think that helps, which we don't need as much O and M to operate here internally in the city. So at this time, we are very thankful for the city council for appropriating that additional money. I thought those are good ideas that were brought up during our budget process last year, and we encourage the continued dialogue. And if you feel like there's some additional dialogue needed, we always open that door. So thank you.
Yes, there will be some additional dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you two please clear your floor? Thank you. I'm not seeing any other council discussion, any public comments?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint ordinances for final adoption. This is a public hearing and speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, please read.
Joint ordinance one, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council establishing a conditional 2% pay increase structure for employees of the office of the city marshal.
I have a motion by Cook, second by Lewis. Any council discussion? Not seeing any public comment?
No ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? Motion to adopt is approved. Joint ordinance two, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $3,251,277.44 in coronavirus relief funds received from the U.S. Treasury through the State of Louisiana Office of Community Development as authorized by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Securities Act and appropriating within various departments.
Okay, motion and a second from the council? I have a motion by Nakhan. Do I have a second? Second by Lewis. Public comment?
No ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Announcements of boards and vacancies on boards and commissions. Jeremy, please read.
Two vacancies exist on the Protect the City Committee. Individuals wishing to submit a resume for the above volunteer vacancies must be a registered voter and a resident of the city of Lafayette. Resumes are to be forwarded to Veronica L. Williams, Clerk of the Council, P.O. Box 4017C, Lafayette, Louisiana 70502, or emailed to BCLafayette@LafayetteLA.gov no later than noon Tuesday, February 9, 2021, with appointments to be made at the February 23, 2021 regular meeting of the Lafayette City Council. Resume submissions are public record.
Thank you, sir. Consideration for appointments by council as a whole to boards and commissions. Jeremy, please read.
Appointment to the Board of Zoning Adjustment for the remainder of an unexpired three-year term through January 30, 2022. This is an alternate position applicants must be, city of Lafayette residents.
The resumes submitted for consideration are as followed. Brian J. Clement and Angelique Hernandez. Do I have any nominations?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, one citizen did sign in to support Angela Hernandez, candidate Angelique Hernandez.
Angelique, I'm so sorry. All right, Councilman Nakhan, you have the floor for a nomination.
Mr. Brian Clement.
Is it really Clement? I'm so sorry, my apologies. All right, then Mr. Lewis, you have, clear the floor? Press done? Press done?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Mr. Lewis, you have the floor?
Angelique Hernandez.
All right, then we have a nomination for Angelique Hernandez. Council discussion, I'm not seeing any. Ms. Williams, any public comment?
No ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote for council to appoint.
District three?
Hernandez.
District four? District five? District one?
Hernandez.
District two?
Clement.
Brian Clement is appointed.
Introductory ordinances. Reminder that number 19 has been separately pulled from Englobo. Jeremy, will you please read number 20? Oh, can I get a motion and a second to introduce Englobo? A motion by Nakhan, second by Cook. Jeremy, will you please read Englobo?
City ordinance seven, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council approving a conditional use permit as to allow a self-service storage facility, case number ZON 2020-25900, Evangeline Drive, conditional use permit located generally east of North University Avenue, north of Cameron Street, and west of Ben B. Street, the particular parcel to be granted a conditional use permit. City ordinance eight, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code so as to reclassify the property of XC Systems LLC, case number ZON 2020-261008 Carmel Drive Rezoning, located generally south of Carmel Drive, west of Pinhook Road, and north of Fred Street, the particular parcel being rezoned from residential single-family to commercial heavy. City ordinance nine, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into an entity-state agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for H3459I-49 interchange sidewalks. City ordinance 10, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council adjusting the manning tables within the Parks and Recreation Department. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by zeroing out the utility cart and tractor activities and creating fairway mower, rotary mower, and tractor mount spreader activities within the Parks and Recreation Department, Levochamp Golf Course Division. City ordinance 12, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the abandonment of a 10-foot utility easement on Track A located at 1321 Ambassador Caffrey Parkway. City ordinance 13, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the building or structure located at 107 Asheville Lane, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Darryl K. Thibodeau, care of Gerald J. Block, attorney-appointed to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare and ordering the condemnation of same.
Do we have any council discussion? Not seeing any comments from the public? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Lazard, I missed you. The floor is yours.
Is Mr. Logan here?
Ascot? Maybe, maybe if, if you'd like, maybe I asked a question, one of these two gentlemen can see if they're in a position to answer it.
I was just gonna ask, I just noticed that whenever we are doing these, it appears as though we're using Mr. Block 100% of the time, is what it appears. And I was just curious as to whether or not we use any other attorneys or?
Yeah, actually, if we could, our, our development and planning director, do you have anything maybe you can add to that? Is this a comfort level or? Because I think, I think I understand, don't even put words in your mouth, but I think I understand your intent of your question, which is can we basically spread the work around if we have, yeah, if we have local attorneys, which is definitely an initiative that I support. Right. So, so basically, we don't know, which is okay. That's a good answer, by the way. If you don't know, don't know. So, but why don't, why don't we address this issue, though? Because I think it's a good point. And I know our Chief of Minority Affairs has that, has had that mission for a while now to, not only for lawyers, but also for engineers, architects, to diversify the pool there. We've got a lot of talent here in Lafayette. So, I appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, because whenever I, whenever we get the, the attorney, I guess, account sheet, the monthly report, the first thing I'm looking for is to see if there are any names on there that I don't recognize. Because it's the same ones over and over and over again. And, and it's, it's really disturbing to me that, and I don't know if, I think, I don't know if it's, it's a comfort thing or just a familiarity thing or whatever.
Probably.
Or if it's just a situation where they've always done it. And, and that to me is not a good enough reason to not share the wealth, if you will. So, I think it's something that we need to take a look at.
And I agree. I think that's a good point. I think our, I know a lot of our departments have that intention. It's probably a comfort level, though, if I had to guess, but that doesn't mean we can't get out of our comfort zone. So, that's good. Again, we have a lot of talent here in Lafayette. I recognize Carlos's efforts, but also encourage our department heads to be cognizant of this too. Now, this might be an area of expertise that is, maybe this, this gentleman is the best person, so I haven't looked into that, but I definitely share in your intentions.
Thank you.
I think that, you bring up a really good point, Councilman Lazard, is that there is situations to the mayor's point, is that sometimes it's so, that particular issue is so specialized, there's only one attorney in the U.S. that can do it. But I'd be interested to know the answer to that question too. Let us know that for the specific issue. And then, but it brings up another question, is I know that if somebody is interested in being able to bid on a, being able to bid on a service within LCG, they have to work with our purchasing department to be approved and be added to a list. And that's anything from when we buy printer ink to chairs to mowers to, or if you want to be able to mow grass or anything like that, you have to get on a list. Do the attorneys have to do that as well?
No.
Right. It's a little different for certain professions.
No, the attorneys don't.
They don't?
That doesn't apply to attorney, to legal.
Okay. I was curious about that, but thank you. And that's all I have.
I think, I think the intention's really well. And I think, I think we're all, we're nodding our heads that we agree with you. So, let's, let's just find ways. But if it is, if it is a situation where it's an expertise, you know, as, as a chair said, you know, maybe it's a specialized area law. It's not an area law I practice, but we definitely want to encourage diversity, encourage to, to get as much talent in Lafayette, these services as we can.
Thank you.
And I do think it is a specialized service, though, because that follows state law, the demolition law, condemnation law, that's under revised statute for Louisiana law. That's not saying, though, that's not someone else that they could find in Lafayette who also is specialized in that area.
Perfect, but they're going to give us that answer, so thank you.
Just a follow-up. Mayor, isn't there also a, a category of services that falls under your exclusive purview, if you will? Is, is Lori still back there?
It, it might be, Paul might have that answer too.
Yeah. Isn't there, isn't there a category where, where the mayor has the authority to, to hire for, for certain things outside of the public day law or something, right?
Right, but this, I don't think it's applicable for, for these particular services. And also, I don't know that answer, so.
Not, not for legal services?
Right.
We know. But I thought, I may be wrong and I need to do some more research on it.
That's okay.
But I thought there was a, a category where, Paul, can you chime in on this?
Paul, your mic is hot, Paul. He's looking it up.
And like I said, I, you know, I may.
Well, Councilman Lazard, do you want to get with them? That way, because it looks like our, our legal is flipping through some pages.
That's fine. Let, let, let's, let's move on. Let's move on.
Let's move on. Perfect, thank you so much. We are moving on to introductory ordinances. I want to remind, no, I'm sorry, we already did that. We don't have any public comment.
We do have one speaker who signed in for ordinance number 20 and they are in support of the ordinance.
Okay, great. And then Veronica, remind me, since we pulled 19, do I need, do we need to discuss 19 now before we go to a vote?
We need to call for the vote for the Englobo items, items 20 through 26.
All right, perfect, we're going to go to a vote for items 20 through 26.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to introduce Englobo is approved.
Thank you. And then now we're going to go to number 19. Please read, Jeremy.
City ordinance five, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances, Chapter 62, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, specifically Article I, Crimes and Offenses in the city of Lafayette, particularly to add Section 62-89.1 Downtown Curfew Hours for minors.
Okay, do I have, do I need a motion and a second? For this one, I need a motion and a second? For number 19, it's the.
It's the downtown curfew.
The downtown curfew one? Do I have a motion or a second? I need a motion and a second for you to even speak. I have a, a motion? Do I have a second? I'm not hearing a second, council members. Do I have a second for number 19?
If there's no second, it dies.
There's no second, so it dies.
For lack of a second.
Okay.
And we move to joint intro ordinances.
All right, we're moving on to joint introductory ordinances. Reminder that item number 29 is pulled from Englobo. Jeremy, please read, I'm sorry, can I get a motion and a second for intro items 28 and 30? Can I get a motion and a second for items 28, 30? I have a motion from Cook. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Nakhan. Jeremy, will you please read items 28 and 30?
Joint ordinance three, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by rededicating 0.075 mills from Fund 274 Cultural Economy to Fund 260 Road and Bridge Maintenance. Joint ordinance five, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budgets of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $67,500 received from the Louisiana Office of State Parks for a land and water conservation program grant for the nature station, transferring matching funds from nature station elevated boardwalk in the amount of $67,500 and appropriating within the Community Development Department.
Council discussion, not seeing any. Ms. Williams, do we have any public comment on those two items?
No ma'am.
All right, then let's go to vote to introduce Englobo, 28 and 30.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to introduce Englobo is approved.
Jeremy, will you please read number 20? Oh, I'm sorry, can I get a motion and a second for?
You need to read 29.
29, I'm sorry, yes, please read number 29.
Joint ordinance four, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Alcohol, Alcoholic Beverages, specifically Article I in general, particularly to add Section 6-14.1.
Can I get a motion and a second for item number 29? Can I get a motion and a second? I'm not hearing either, so the, dies on the floor. Moving on. Comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Ms. Williams, do we have any public comments?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. This is the time to speak about comments relative to the city of Lafayette that are not items on the agenda. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. For efficiency and to allow everyone the opportunity to speak, questions should be submitted in writing to the Clerk of the Council. The three-minute rule is in effect. Ms. Williams, will you please call for the comments?
First speaker is Jack Venable, followed by Trinsella Bonet, Bonet, Bonat.
And both mics are available. And if you're left in line, please just come step up here, that way we can move quickly. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Jack Venable. I'm a resident of Lafayette and owner of multiple businesses within the parish and in the city. I've come to you today to discuss an issue that's affecting many businesses, including my own, in this area. The problem is illegal dumping into dumpsters. Can I take this off? Okay. I have locations in District Two, Three, Five in the city, and locations in all five, all five parish districts. Businesses spend a lot of money on trash disposal, and the costs keep rising, and illegal dumping is not helping. I pay thousands of dollars per year on this issue, and I've tried many times to get help with it. The main problem is there's no clear law or ordinance that says filling up someone's dump, someone else's dumpster is illegal. So there's no way to punish the people who do it. I deal with this issue on a daily basis, and it's a huge problem. So far, what I've attempted to do is when someone dumps trash into one of my containers, and I have proof of it, whether it be video address on their trash, license plate numbers, or witnesses, I call the police in the jurisdiction. In other towns that I do business, they'll investigate and they'll issue a citation. In Lafayette, I have not had any luck. Over the past five years, I've notified the authorities many times, and I've been told so many excuses. For example, that the city doesn't want to enforce it because they'd rather them throw it in your dumpster than throw it on the street, that it's not against the law, that it's a civil issue. Quite a few officer, officers in both the parish and the city have told me that the state has rewritten the theft of services, and trash is no longer covered under it. Many of them refer me to a city ordinance, Section 7434, I don't know the number, but I think Jeremy does it, he sent it to me. This ordinance is poorly written, and no one knows how to enforce it. It says that it is illegal and should be enforced by the parish constable, but when you contact the constables, they have no jurisdiction to do so, and they don't know anything about it at all. Both the city police and the sheriff's office say it's not them either, so basically, it's not illegal in Lafayette to dump anything anywhere. I have reached out to the district attorney's office and the city prosecutor. They have suggested trying to charge them with littering, or trespassing, or some other way around it, and the police can't do that either. Most of the dumpsters on businesses are in public areas. I've also spoke to George, Jordan Gordon White-Wilts, and he's telling me that 74 only applies to containers from a public services that fall under the contract, so basically only the blue cans.
Sir, your time is up, but I.
No, thank you.
Veronica, if you don't mind, and get with Jeremy tomorrow, I'd like to continue this conversation with you and I. We definitely, I actually had an issue this week about that, so your, your, you being here tonight is very timely. I would like to pull that particular ordinance and see what we can do and get with legal on how we can partner with Lafayette Police Department, Sheriff's Department, because we do need to make that legal and have a process in place on how business owners can report that, or residents, or apartment complexes. So thank you so much for coming. I'm going to have my council office reach out to you tomorrow, so please make sure your phone number's on there and your email.
Sure. Thank you very much.
No, thank you for coming.
And thank everyone.
I appreciate that. Thank you. But Mayor, I know you had something you want to say, I'm sorry.
No, hey, look, you saved me a phone call, so that's, no, that's, look, sir, I appreciate, we all appreciate you coming up. You're, you're not the first person to bring that issue, so I'm glad. It is very timely. So I, I join in the, the chairperson's initiative. If you could, get some feedback from, from your colleagues as well, and then Mr. Eskey can help us and work with the council's office, and we'll get, we'll see what we need to do. If it's drafting, we may have to draft a joint ordinance, if, if we can help the unincorporated areas as well, I, I would support that, so just, yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. And if we don't mind finding out best practices, if we can pull, and I, I don't know, Mary, if that's your department, that can help us with that, because it'll be with enforcement? Yep, you're nodding. So I'd like to see best practices, other communities, how they handle that as well. So if you don't mind, start working on that.
Two, two thoughts. So if Mary gets involved administratively, which is fine, and that may be appropriate, but if we're going to add a, unfortunately, criminal aspect to it, then it would be law enforcement, and there, and there's nothing wrong with having both elements, you know? I definitely would, would always rather the administrative approach, even though it's a little more work on our departments, but it's, it's, it gets the job done at a, at a less, I guess, restrictive way, so.
Absolutely.
I know I don't have any time, but it's relevant. I, I did get the sheriff's department to write a citation on that ordinance. Now, we have to wait for the district attorney's office to process it to see even, even if it applies, so that could take a while, but whenever it does, that'll.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. And we'll get with you tomorrow. Make sure we have your name, phone number, and email. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Trinsella Bonet, and I just provided you with a handout, and that's her handout, and she will be followed by George Bentley.
Good evening. My name is Trinsella Bonet. I'm here to speak about an issue that affects myself and my community. It's about these environmental fees that are charged to the people's property taxes. I received a bill on my family's property this year. It had an environmental fee, grass cutting, that allegedly occurred on the May 13, 2019, and eight, August 6, 2019. I went in to pay the taxes and had all correspondence pertaining to this property be sent to my address back on the 17th of November, 2019. At that time, when I paid the bill, I was not informed that there was a fee for the grass cutting that was on there. If I was told then that there was a fee, I would have paid the bill. It was $70 for each occurrence, I found out, but I wasn't informed, so I paid the taxes that they told me that was due. And like I said, you know, had I known, I would have taken care of this. But then I received the bill this year, and it had 500-something dollars on there. There's a copy of it on page three of the taxes. It was $570 fee for environmental fee. I called the tax office, Ms. Ashley Wilts and Russell Bork, about this issue on the 24th of November, 2020, and I was informed that it was for an environmental fee of cutting the grass on the alleged dates, that I was not aware of, and that they had sent a letter to Chicago to my dead aunt. No, they, at that time, they had all my information. The letter was supposedly sent in 2020. They had all my information, and I should have received the letter telling me that that was going to be taking place, and I didn't receive any letters. So I'm calling about this, you know, had I had known about it, I would have paid it, paid it. But this is a problem that is taking place in our communities, with not only myself, but with a lot of people, and this is something that I think that needs to be addressed, you know? You know, we need more communication and more accountability and some form of way where, you know, because I went to pay the taxes, and I was told that I couldn't pay just the taxes, I had to pay the whole amount, you know? That's a lot of money to cough up at one time, you know? And a lot of people in our community are on fixed incomes, they're, they're elderly, and they can't afford that. So we need some resources that'll help these people and myself to take care of these bills, you know? If you have any questions, feel free to call me or ask questions.
Councilman Lewis buzzed in, so he has the floor. Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Bonet, I want to make sure I'm clear, clear on this. You say that you had to receive a bill, I guess that's what it is, a bill for not cutting grass or debris?
On the, on the bill, it says right here, on the tax lien, it says for environmental fee of $570. Now, I never did receive anything telling me that they had cut the grass. I just started assuming the property taxes when my aunt died in 2019. Around the 17th of November, 2019, I went and paid the taxes, and I filled out the form to have all the correspondence pertaining to that particular property sent to my address. I didn't receive anything. I was informed when I called the Ms. Ashley, she had to reinvestigate it because she was asking me for some dates, and I'm saying, there's no dates on here. I don't know what you're talking about. It's just saying an environmental fee. She had to go back and pull the folder to see what was that all about, and she informed me that it was for these grass cutting fees, you know? And I'm saying, okay, well, when did they go cut the grass? Because I wasn't informed, my family members didn't tell me that they cut the grass.
So, so my question is, did you receive any, because normally, when it's time to cut grass, it's some grass that had not been cut in a while, they send you a letter, certified letter, saying that the grass needed to be cut. Did you receive anything like that?
I didn't receive anything.
So you just found out about this $570 lien just?
Just this year, when, when I got the tax notice.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, I think.
Hey, I tell you what, let's, let's take this offline, because we're going to need to go back and, who's your council member? I didn't see your address.
Well, I just moved. Pat is the council member for where this address is at.
Perfect. Why don't you get, why don't you and Pat connect? Pat can, or the office can reach out to you, we can pull up, they'll have the file with all the letters they sent, the date it was sent, because they're, like Mr. Lewis said, they're all certified letters. So that way, we can have a meeting about that, and not have it here in the council meeting and hash it out. That way, you have all the information in front of you.
Yes. I requested the information, but they would not send me the information, you know? I wanted to present it at this council meeting, but like I said, they would not provide me with the information, especially Mr. Bork, you know, he's very rude.
What we can do is the staff, the staff could follow up with Mr. Bork, and we can get the information on Mr. Lewis's behalf. We could see who was the property owner, that's who they would notify. If you were not the property owner at the time, and it was your aunt.
Family property.
Yes, but it would be notified of the person on the name, the name on the property. But we'll follow up for you, and we'll get that information to Mr. Lewis, because we don't have none of that information, of course, before.
My issue is, though, I, when, when the alleged violation took place, I wasn't in, responsible for the property.
Right, that's what I thought, yeah.
In November, I actually took responsibility for the property, but they sent a letter before they put the tax lien against the property, they sent a letter in 2020 to Chicago.
So again, we're going to, because your time is up, we're going to have the office connect with you tomorrow, is that okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
And Pat, just so you know, that's in your district.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, appreciate it.
George Bentley, followed by Clifford Taylor.
You buzzed in, did you want to speak? Thank you. Can you, thank you.
I'm George Bentley. I have more than one residence here in the city limits, and this is, is involving property owner on Fiala Road. I spoke with you, this has been about six months ago, and Mr. Chadner and I spoke. We set a tentative appointment, I couldn't make it. I called, you know, we touched base, canceled it before, a little time go by, and never heard back from him, and I put in a couple of calls, haven't heard back from him. My concern is, I do not want another micro inch of blacktop on Fiala Road, because I'm very concerned that it just might flood my house, okay? I don't know who's up to things, but the original entrance into that retirement village, that never should have been allowed, on the downhill side of a, of a drainage blocking, a 22-by-four-and-a-half-foot ditch is now 24 inches. It's on the downside, it's downhill, and Vero School Road is down there. In other words, now you got a place where at X-point, the water can escape, but that ain't big enough, okay? They put a temporary entrance into the place on the other side of the cooley, on the uphill side of the cooley, where the entrance should have gone before. Somebody blew it. Planning, I don't know which department within the, the city is supposed to oversee this kind of stuff, but never should have been allowed, never ever. The problem I've got is, where they put that entrance, the permanent entrance, because the other one is temporary while they're building the place, that coupled up with, with about 12 inches of blacktop that's been put on Fiala Road in the last 45 years that I've been living there and owned it, okay? That creates a dam, and I'm very concerned about it might get my slab. The poor people in Clearview have no chance whatsoever. We get a big rain, they have no chance, which leads to my, the other thing I'd like to do while I'm here. You and I had some conversations before they put that entrance where it was allowed. I said, don't do it. It got done. I have an email that says, it'll be Katy bar the door if you block that ditch. Well, next thing I know, they did all the, the dirt work. Next thing I know, they started doing the dirt work again. They raised it about two and a half feet for maybe 20 acres, I don't know how big the thing is. Okay. You put me in touch with an engineer, Mark so-and-so, I've got his name and everything, okay? He assured me what was done, but they did what, what everybody knows won't work. They took the retention pond and made it deeper. That does not do anything unless you keep the water level down. I would like to know right now, with the way that development is, with that water, with that water, will it handle the volume it's supposed to handle if it goes to rain?
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Cook, you buzzed in, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Bentley, we have had several conversations, and, and, you know, I would defer to public works, since I'm not the engineer, but I would be happy to have another, sit down with you and have another conversation, and they can maybe explain once again what the procedure was that was done, and/or, you know, what the potential is, so that we can maybe put some of your fears to rest.
Right. Well, the other thing I'm very concerned about is.
Sir, your time, your time's up, sir.
The blacktop.
No, your time is up, but let's just join Mr. Mayor there on the side with our public works director. Is that all, Councilwoman? All right, next speaker? Next speaker? Oh, there you are, sir.
Clifford Taylor, followed by John Babbin.
Good evening. I represent District Five. The name of that area is Crappelville. It's one of the oldest neighborhoods in this Lafayette. It's, we have a problem there, it's called Mr. T's Firewood. Y'all be looking at the pictures. I talked to Mayor about a year ago. He cleaned it up, and then he put it right back. That's all he does, is plays with the city and the people in the neighborhood. I'm representing my sister. The first picture y'all looking at is when y'all driving from Evanger through we. That's the corner of Drain and 16th Street. The next picture is Derby's Grocery, which the first thing the city's going to tell you is, that he's grandfather, but he bought that business and he closed it. What, what we need is, for this business to leave this area, so the people can have a quality of life there. You know, the children's can get hurt playing around in that area. Unfortunate for five years, we hadn't had nothing happen yet, but it's going to happen. But I can't go through everything, the pictures talk for themselves. So I own another piece of property on 109 Guidery, is the last picture that you have. I got the same thing with the other young lady. I got a bill this year from 2019, and I changed my address in, in the, last year for the taxes. On this sheet, it says they mailed it on the 27th, but it went to my old address, and when I got my taxes, I got a bill for $365. And I talked to Mr. Russell Bird two weeks ago. He said he was going to check and see when I changed my address. I'm the customer, ain't heard from him yet. So I'm here to ask, to have this reduced, because the taxes are only about $27. And every time I text Mr. T's Firewood, the name on the sheet of paper goes to my property, and the adjacent property right behind is something that Mr. T's own, and y'all can see the debris. So he sees now I don't cut the grass, but he don't see that debris back there. And I won't say his name, but y'all, y'all can see the name on this sheet. We really would like some help. I know we talked to you last year about him, Mayor. They cleaned it up, but like he says, the city come, I cleaned it up a little bit, and then I go right back. So soon as the storm came, this is what y'all see from January. But I really like to have some help on this, because I did change my address when I paid taxes last year, and my name is on it.
I, I see that we have a few council members that have buzzed in, so hold on one second. Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
Just, just to make, clear out, just to be clear on this, you're receiving bills that is not for you? That's what I'm going to say.
It is for me. It is on my property.
It's your property.
But I didn't get it, because I changed my address and they sent it to my old address. That's the address they have on here. And I told Mr. Bird that I changed my address. He said he was going to check to see when I changed it, so we can get it fixed, but it's two weeks later, and I hadn't heard from him.
Yeah, I think some other councilmen want to chime in, so, you know, I'll let them chime in.
Well, I think this is very similar to the fir, the other woman's situation, is that perhaps we can have the, get with Ms. Veronica Williams, make sure we have your correct phone number and email address, and we can work with the council member in that district and, and inspection, and we can come up with a solution to that, if that works for you.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, because we'll need the, the copies of documents, so.
But could you speak for us after?
No, you're right. You're right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
John Sam, followed by Nina Baik.
Good evening. My name is John Babbin. I'm from Iberia Parish, but I own property in the same area that Mr. Chiller was just talking about. This issue has been going on for quite some time now. We're here this evening asking for some type of resolution to the problem. You've seen the photographs, he has taken over the whole neighborhood. It's a quality of life issue, it's a safety issue. It's only a matter of time before some child's going to walk, I mean, all this firewood piled up, you know, four, five, six, 10 feet high. Near my property, what he's doing now, he's going out into the parish, getting firewood, and he's taking the trash, and he's piling on the side of the road for the city to pick up. And it, it just sits there, right on sidewalk, sidewalk. He's taking his trailers, which are filled with firewood, and parking on the sidewalk, impeding the fire, the, I'm sorry. the, I'm sorry, the sidewalks, where people can't even access the sidewalks. We've met with the city numerous times. We keep being told that something's going to be done, but nothing happens. This has been going on quite some time now. I don't live here. Like I say, I'm in Iberia Parish. I was born and raised in Lafayette. I've only been in Iberia Parish for seven, eight years. I still have family in that area. So I'm here tonight on their behalf, asking for something, you know. I'm not looking to put the man out of business. You know, I'm all about doing business, but from what I understand, he is operating without a license. I mean, you know, if, if that's the way you conduct your business, then I don't know. So again, I'm just here tonight asking for something to be done to give everybody in the neighborhood some type of resolution to this problem.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Same thing. Please get with Ms. Veronica to make sure we have your phone number and email address correct, so we can reach out to you tomorrow. Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Anita Begno, followed by James Proctor.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Anita Begno. I'm the CEO of the Downtown Development Authority and Downtown Lafayette Unlimited. A sincere thank you, Mr. Mayor President, for the decision to delay the parking changes, to have more dialogue, and to work toward consensus on the issue. Thank you so much. DDA is committed to helping to garner feedback and find consensus on this really important issue, as well as the goals you talked about at the beginning of the meeting, to achieve a safer and more prosperous downtown. We have the knowledge and the expertise to help lend to this conversation and are happy to be a partner in contributing to that with you. These conversations should also include residents and business and property owners, specifically those who live in the Downtown Development Authority District and in our cultural district, as well as the law enforcement partners that we have, all of which have locations downtown: Lafayette Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, and the newly elected Marshal. It will take all of us to achieve what we all desire: a safe, prosperous, business-friendly downtown that is welcome to residents, businesses, employees, employers, and visitors, and we want to help get it right. So thank you for the opportunity to start that dialogue. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Anita. James Proctor, followed by Keith Falk.
Good evening, everyone. I bought some property a couple of years ago in the downtown area in what is called Thetanville, and it was one lot, formerly owned by the Boostaneck family across from Smile. It was two lots, one sale. And to my dismay, about a week ago, my girlfriend said, hey, your lot's under adjudication. Our lot is under adjudication, one of them. I said, well, that just can't be. Well, when I looked deeper into the situation, what had happened was the address had been changed for one of the lots, but not the other, even though it was part of one sale. So I started calling around frantically, because it was a $500 something dollar bill, which to a guy like me, who's been laid off from his oilfield job due to COVID, represents a significant amount of money. So I called Mr. Lewis here just to see what he could tell me. He suggested I come down here and talk to you. Now, I've also talked to Mr. Wiltz over at the tax assistance office. This is for the city tax. Turns out, I was paying for the parish tax on both lots and the city tax on one of the lots the whole time. The lot, the tax, city tax on the lots is $22 each. So, you know, $500 certainly came as a surprise. I'd like to add here, at the, you know, the risk of being long-winded, that earlier this year, I was walking the streets of the north side for the census, and one thing that I consistently noted is that there are a heck of a lot of people out there who are unable to do what we consider the traditional American means of transmitting our wealth down to the next generation through home. They're not able to do it because they're losing their homes. And I can't help but feel like this $500 surcharge, while it may not be generating a whole lot of money, I just cannot see it generating a whole lot of money for the city revenues. It is probably a showstopper for plenty of people out there who would like to hand on their home but are all of a sudden having it yanked out from under them. These are lots that I would like to build on one day. Right now, they're empty, but it's a part of town that I'm living in, and I'm committed to, and I'm happy to be in. I would just like, you know, to bring this to y'all's attention as something that came as a complete surprise to me, and I feel like, you know, some, I would hope that I could get some help on this, since it was clearly some kind of paperwork issue. Mr. Wiltz noted that notes on the, on the paperwork said that the attorney who did the filing for me couldn't find my address, which I guess I'll have to address that with the attorney. Good to see all of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Keith Falk, followed by Wallace Senegal.
Keith Falk, concerned community activist. Who is in charge of the upkeep of Moss Street? And when was the last time it been inspected? Because Moss Street needs to be done. Something needs to be done with Moss Street. Every time you drive down there, it's bumping. Goodbye to your struts. Something is wrong with Moss Street. It's terrible. It's terrible. It's a safety hazard. Somebody needs to go check it out.
Next speaker is Wallace Senegal.
I'm sorry. Mr. Lazard has the floor.
If you can identify for me the particular area that you're referring to. Because Moss Street is actually Louisiana Highway 728-1, which is a state highway.
Okay.
So it's state. But we can certainly, like I said, if it's a particular area you're referring to, I can certainly take the necessary steps to try to get it addressed.
Willow, once you turn off a Willow down Moss Street going towards Gloria Switch, all the way down that way?
The whole thing is not that bad, okay? There may be some spots.
Well, the sections in between. I'm giving you the cross streets in between where it's bad.
I got you. I got you. I'll certainly, I ride up and down Moss Street, so I'll see if I can identify areas that really need attention.
Preferably around Pizza Village.
Okay.
All those areas. It's bad. It's rough.
Okay.
It's rough.
I'll certainly take a look at it and contact the appropriate authorities. Thank you.
Wallace Senegal, followed by the final speaker, London LeBlanc.
Yes, good evening again. Mr. Lazard, I mean, Councilman Lazard, from Moss Street to Alexander Street, that street would be in terrible shape, you know? It's not just one area. You can get it in one area, and it's going to be worse than the other area. But totally down Moss Street, from Willow all the way down to Alexander. So that is a terrible street compare, and it's been like that. It's not just under your watch. It became like that. It's been like that for many years. But anyway, my concern is, I want to ask the council, is it any way we could get Public Works or Republic to put empty garbage cans around the city to where people could maybe pull up to them and drop their trash in, instead of throwing it out the car window all over the city? You know, and it's not just on the north side, it's all over the city, you know? But we do have some bad spots on the north side that I feel the people is just disrespecting their city by throwing trash out there. And I'm very concerned about that, because when people come to visit me at my home, you know, from out of town, out of state, they got to come through and look at that. So some kind of way we could put some garbage cans, or have, like I say, Republic to put an empty can with out of top on it, and when they come through on Monday, just dump it. Maybe that might give some people a little incentive to kind of put their trash in, because if I have trash, that's what I do. I pull up on somebody's can that's still out there with out of top on it, and I throw my trash in it, you know? If I don't wait till I get home. Sometime I could wait. Sometime I can't. So again, you know, thank you guys for listening to me and taking my concern.
Final speaker, London LeBlanc.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time. My name's London LeBlanc. I am a resident of downtown Lafayette, and I want to thank you for your concern about the safety of downtown. I do have to ask that maybe the residents get included in the conversation a little more often. Sometimes it, there's not a lot of us, but sometimes it feels like we get left out when thinking about ordinances for downtown, specifically the 24-hour parking. I do understand the rates may be a little antiquated, but the 24-hour parking feels a little harsh, and maybe dialogue with the residents and some of the business owners downtown might help to find a better solution somewhere in the middle. Thank you for the time.
Next speaker, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mayor, I want to confirm, because I did get a text from somebody that lives downtown as well. I know that originally, the parking was going to start tonight, the new rules were going to effect, but you said you're going to wait on all the rules. Is that correct? Hold on, let me get you. I just want to confirm.
No, I appreciate it. No, and that date was not arbitrary. We knew we had a council meeting. We knew we could have this opportunity, have continued dialogue. And look, I appreciate it, but it's not just from the council, not just from Councilman Lazard, who represents that area, but DDA, one of our residents came by. Thank you for doing that. I know it's kind of, kind of late, but, you know, your input's valuable. And look, I think Anita said it perfectly. We're all in this together. We all want a safer, more prosperous downtown, and we're committed to that. So that's correct.
Perfect. And he mentioned that he wants to be more, just want to be a part of the conversation. You didn't mention any future meetings, but do they email your office to get involved in the future discussions, like business owners, DDA, residents?
Yeah, and Councilman Lazard, I know he's in town, so we always defer to our, each respective council member in that district, so I know that you have an interest of getting residents involved. So maybe, and I'm looking at our DDA CEO, maybe she can put some more work on you, but no, you're doing a good job. And if we could get some more input from residents, that'd be great. And also, while I have the mic on this issue, and Anita can talk about this maybe at different meeting, but there was a consultant that one of our meetings, I mean, we've been talking about this for like six, seven months. So one of our meetings, you, somebody downtown had mentioned a consultant. Do you have the name? Responsible Hospitality Institute. I would, I would encourage that dialogue, maybe get the council involved. If, I know DDA committed, if I'm not mistaken, $10,000. Thirty, so they're committed. Look, and these, if someone mentioned best practices, if we can bring someone that has some suggestions for us to adopt here in Lafayette, then we should all run to that and not run away from it. So, you know, so we want to appreciate your commitment to downtown and also to our council members.
Perfect. Did you, you sure you're good? Okay, perfect. So if you're interested in getting involved, reach out to either the mayor's office or to your council member that represents you, Councilman Glenn Lazard. So, all right, and I don't see anything else. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the regular city council meeting. Thank you all, and have a good night.